Call meeting in order, Budget Allegiance, Councilmember Lawson.
Budget Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Larky?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Davidson?
Here.
Councilmember Pryon? Councilmember Lawson?
Here.
Councilmember Richardson?
Here.
Councilmember McCallum?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
We have a quorum. All right, personal appearances, item one has asked to be removed, and then we have Cindy Crete. So come on up Cindy, if you're here. State your name and address for the record, please.
Cindy Crete, four ten Westover Circle, Belton, Missouri. Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing me to speak today. For those of you who know me, I don't like speaking public, so please bear with me if I get nervous or my voice starts cracking. I'm here to express my opposition to the affordable housing plan being discussed later this evening. The survey conducted in two thousand twenty-three clearly shows the need for housing for families earning less than fifty-four thousand a year, but the same survey shows the citizens believe we have enough apartments, with eighty-four percent of the respondents saying we have enough. The survey also shows that respondents list the need to maintain, preserve our current parkland, and seventy-one percent want the city to prioritize parkland. Since I know all of the letters and comments received by the planning commission and during the public hearing are included in your packet, I'm going to limit my comments to two main concerns. First is the sheer size of this project. It's simply too big for the space. Two hundred and fifty-two units over eight acres equates to thirty-four units per acre. Comparing that against the other two big complexes we have in town, Center three oh one has the next highest density at eighteen units per acre. So that means Commons of Belton is almost twice as big as far as density and how tight it's going to be when compared to Center three oh one. Researching the Kansas City market in general, they say on average, the density for a two-to-three-story complex would be twenty units per acre. Man, we are almost two times more dense than what Kansas City average is. Looking at the potential for number of residents using one person in a, or two people in a one-bedroom apartment, three in a two, and four in a three-bedroom apartment, we're looking at a potential of seven hundred and fifty-six residents per the complex at Center, or at Commons of Belton, which is ninety-four people per acre. That's a lot of people in a small space. Center three oh one, again, the next closest, is at seven hundred and sixty-four units, or residents, which is sixty-six residents per acre. Still a lot, but a lot fewer. In my opinion, it's just too big of a project for that small of a space. Second, this complex is not located near any of the services that these residents would need, many of which won't have a car, because they're only allowed one car, but many of them won't have a car. There's no public transportation. The nearest grocery store is Dollar General. I don't know if you've been in there lately. It's not a great grocery store. They also don't have access, easy access, to social services, healthcare, medical. You know, if they're having to walk and they're having multiple little kids, it's really not conducive to the area. Now, I believe I speak for many of my fellow citizens. We are not against affordable housing. We're against this plan. It would provide the affordable housing that we need, but it comes at the expense of other things that the citizens have also said they wanted to have, which is green space and the belief that we have enough apartments. Thank you for allowing me to express my comments. My hope is the council will continue to listen to its citizens. While Belton is not the small town that everybody wants us to believe that we are, and it's not the small town it was when I moved here forty-five years ago, it doesn't mean that we can't continue to foster a small-town feel. You do that by maintaining green space and building neighborhoods that feel like a small town. Big apartment complexes are not small town. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, E, unfinished business, one, motion approving the final reading of Bill twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six.
An ordinance approving a final plat for fixed-off gas station, a one-lot and one-track plat on point seven-six more or less acres located in the southeast and southwest corners of one hundred and fifty-Fish Street and North Scott Avenue in the city of Belton, Missouri.
Present.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mayor Larky?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Richardson?
Aye.
McCallum?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Thompson?
Yes.
Davidson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion, item two, motion approving the final reading of Bill twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven.
An ordinance approving an agreement with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission for the installation of roadside flashers for city operations.
Present.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Davidson?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
White?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
McCallum?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Mayor Larky?
Yes.
Richardson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Three, motion approving the final reading of Bill twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight.
An ordinance permitting Chapter seventeen Parks and Recreation of the Code of Ordinances, City of Belton, Missouri, to align the provisions contained therein with the Home Rule Charter of the City of Belton, Missouri.
Present.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Lawson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Richardson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Yes.
McCallum?
Aye.
Mayor Larky?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carries. F, new business, one, motion approving the first reading of Bill twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine.
An ordinance approving a rezoning from PR, Public Recreation and Public Use, to R-three PUD, multi-family planned unit development, and a preliminary development plan for the Commons of Belton, a two hundred and fifty-two-unit multi-family development at the southwest corner of Westover Road and Bong Avenue.
Present.
Second.
Motion and a second. You're up, sir.
See if there's a presentation. Just one second. Okay. The presentation should be up shortly. Before this evening, our request for rezoning and a preliminary development plan for the Commons of Belton project on an eight-point-zero-three-acre property located at the southwest corner of Westover Road and Bong Avenue. This request includes the subject property, rezoning the subject property from PR Parks, Recreation and Public Use, to R-three PUD, multi-family planned unit development, and approval of a preliminary development plan for a two hundred and fifty-two-unit apartment development with amenities. The eight-point-zero-three acre, acres include six-point-eight-seven acres that is currently owned by the City of Belton and one-point-one-sixteen acres owned by Calvary University. The future land use map adopted in two thousand eleven and re-adopted in two thousand fourteen, up until two thousand twenty-four had the property shown as commercial. As part of the review of the future land use map adopted with the comprehensive plan in November two thousand twenty-four, the property was identified as Parks and Recreation based on the current use. The property has historically been maintained by the Parks Department as a seasonal practice soccer field with no other site improvements. The proposed site plan includes seven three-story apartment buildings for a total of two hundred and fifty-two units. Three hundred and fifty-nine parking spaces are proposed, all uncovered surface parking. Vehicular and pedestrian access are provided from both Westover Road and Bong Avenue. Amenities include a clubhouse, pool, and two playground areas. There are three modifications requested as part of this proposal, two of those which staff believe are minor to the development, which include a front setback along Westover, reduction from thirty feet to twenty-five feet, and a two-foot increase in the overall building height to accommodate three stories. These two modifications are common for multi-family developments and have been approved elsewhere in the city. The third modification, in which staff has expressed some concerns with the staff report, is related to the reduction of parking from three hundred and seventy-eight spaces to three hundred and fifty-nine spaces, which would be an overall loss of nineteen spaces. The applicant submitted a draft copy of the tenant lease agreement, which states that the parking of more than one vehicle per unit is not permitted without prior permission from the landlord. Staff believes that that's feasible for a one-bedroom unit, however, does have concerns, depending on the household makeup, of how two- and three-bedroom units will be accommodated. After the publication of the Planning Commission Agenda Packet, the applicant submitted revised building elevations and renderings that modified the building style materials. On the left was the original submittal, and then the right is what has been revised and proposed this evening. And this reduces the overall building height from forty-three and a half feet to just under thirty-seven feet. Balconies or patios have been added to every unit, whereas the previous plan only had those for two- and three-bedroom units. Materials are more traditional, consisting of stone veneer, lap siding, and shingle siding. Staff does have some concerns with the side elevations, which are composed of a single material. Additional design elements and materials need to be added to those facades, especially those that are visible from the street. The overall unit mix for the two hundred and fifty-two units includes eighty-four units each of one, two, and three-bedroom units. The proposed amenity package includes a clubhouse, pool, two playgrounds, barbecue areas, and enhanced fencing consisting of masonry columns with an aluminum picket-style fence around the interior perimeter boundaries that are shared with the Army Reserve, the golf course, and Calvary University. Additionally, landscaping requirements require to be met for the property, including street trees, parking lot trees, and foundation plantings around all buildings. In reviewing the staff report, reviewing the request, staff is tasked with utilizing the rezoning criteria as required by the code. This includes a review of the two thousand twenty-fifty comprehensive plan, of which this request fits under two of the chapters. First, Parks and Recreation, the city has been advised to have a long-term plan for the utilization of city-owned properties. The plan identified multiple properties, including the subject property as undeveloped or underutilized, based on its current conditions that could be a redevelopment opportunity for the city. Additionally, the city's goals should be to intentionally plan for and locate parks in areas currently underserved and areas with low levels of service. This area has the highest concentration of parks in the city with three developed neighborhood parks and a developed regional park within a short walk or bike ride from the site. Under Housing in Neighborhoods, goals include supporting lifecycle housing types for access to homes at all income levels for both current and future residents. This includes all housing types from single-family to multifamily at all income levels. Additionally, there was a lot of feedback that new apartment developments in the city rarely include three-bedroom options. The proposed project provides new apartment units that are more affordable than recent apartments that have been built in the city. And the proposed project also provides those three-bedroom units, which have not been included in recent projects, with the exception of the Creek Stone and Autumn Ridge Apartments, which has proposed sixteen three-bedroom units as part of their proposal. All of the three-bedroom units are in single-family, two-family, or townhouse developments, which may not have the same access to amenities or services that a larger apartment development project can provide. Going through some of the other review criteria, we evaluate the proposal based on the compatibility with adjacent land uses. The site is located in an area with a mix of residential land uses, including single-family, two-family, townhomes, and dormitory housing. This is not in an exclusively single-family area, and due to the former presence of the Air Force Base, it has always had a mix of housing options for residents. The site is located near a growing industrial park to the north, which continues to expand with limited new housing opportunities near those jobs. Both proximity to growing employment and access to housing tax credits specifically designed for these types of locations are the reason the applicant has proposed the project at this site. Apartments have traditionally been used as a compatible transitional land use between non-commercial land uses and less intensive residential land uses, which is why they're typically located along a collector or arterial street, of which Westover is classified. The remaining review criteria include character consistency with city goals, development trends, and the suitability of the property for the proposed development. The preliminary development includes compliance with the code and an evaluation of the modifications requested through the PUD. Based on the application that has been submitted and reviewed based on the review criteria in the code, staff recommends approval of the rezoning. With that being said, community development staff is supportive of improving the park system as is well documented in the comprehensive plan. Growing the city's tax base is critical to be able to maintain and enhance the park system. The amenities provided with the development also do not overburden the nearby neighborhood parks. The need for affordable housing is also well documented within the comprehensive plan. Staff also recommends approval of the preliminary development plan, which provides certainty on what can be developed with the rezoning. Should the developer not proceed with the development, a future developer would still be held to the same plan unless the PUD is amended through this process. And the proposed site plan, building design, and amenity package is similar to other apartment developments that have been approved in recent years. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on May sixth, at which one person spoke in support of the request, and seventeen people spoke in opposition to the request. Support was expressed for the need for affordable housing. Opposition was expressed for the loss of the land that has been utilized for green space for decades, as well as concerns about the increase in traffic and impact to public services and the negative impact to property values in schools. And there are also concerns regarding the transparency in the development process as it relates to the sale of the property and approvals of tax credits, which, with that, I have a few additional slides to help clarify those items. The developer initially contacted the development staff in January of two thousand twenty-four and had interest in developing in a qualified census tract. The map on the screen shows the only qualified census tract area in the city of Belton, which includes the north part of Cimarron Trails, the former Air Force Base housing, Calvary, the golf course, and the subject property. So fairly limited locations in the city of Belton that meet that requirement. Staff provided a high-level explanation of the process to the applicant of what the development process would be for that project. Staff received no updates on the project for about nine months, and then was contacted in October twenty-four. After the initial discussion, the developer stated that the only qualified census tract in Belton, which is on the screen, was going to be removed effective January first, two thousand twenty-five, and that they would need to move quickly to submit an application for tax credits, which had to be submitted by early December. On the screen is an outline of the development process, which is also in the development guidebook that we have on the community development webpage. The developer requested a pre-application meeting shortly after they contacted staff in October. The pre-application meeting was held on November sixth of last year, and then we received a complete application, making the request that's before you this evening, in mid-March. Over the last two months, we followed the development process as it plays out for development projects in the city, including staff reviews, revision reviews, public notice, and holding a public hearing at the Planning Commission. Low-income housing tax credits are tax credits that are available to developments that agree to income restrictions on dwelling units to provide market-rate-style projects at a lower rent, which limits the need for other forms of housing assistance to residents. What qualifies as low income is probably a higher income than what most people think when they think of low income in Belton, which falls under the KC Metro income limits. A family of four in Belton making eighty-nine thousand dollars a year is considered low income, as that dollar amount is less than eighty percent of the area median family income, which is at a hundred and eleven thousand dollars for the metro. For comparison, Belton's overall median income is below that at seventy-one thousand dollars. The state of Missouri manages the approval process of tax credits, which is separate from housing vouchers for individual tenants. It is common for a developer to submit for tax credit approval before they purchase a property. Lastly, related to this project is the continued need for affordable housing, especially based on our local workforce. Staff recognizes the need for housing at all income levels from affordable to higher end. We continue to work with developers on providing all types of housing and income levels and hope to bring forward additional housing developments for consideration this year. However, this project is the only project that is eligible for low-income housing tax credits in a qualified census tract, which is an opportunity we will not have again for the foreseeable future without further program changes to that program. The last low-income housing tax credit, multi-family housing, was approved in the early two thousands for Lakewood Terrace, which ended its qualified status in two thousand twenty-four, going to a market-rate project, which resulted in a loss of a hundred and fifty-two affordable housing units in the city. Based on the average salaries, many common occupations of single-person households in Belton would be considered low income and may have challenges of locating affordable housing without either financial assistance or sharing their housing expenses with others. Up in the upper right-hand corner are just some of the examples of median salaries and the maximum affordable housing per month that those occupations can afford, and this is based on the Bureau of Labor Statistics from last year of the average salaries. And then the max is based on the assumption that thirty percent, anything over thirty percent of your income on housing and utilities is considered cost burden. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended to deny the rezoning and preliminary development plan. Based on the review criteria presented, staff does recommend approval based on the well-documented need for affordable housing, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant and their representatives are also here if there are any questions.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, I always got something. First, I just want to say thank you to everybody that took the time to provide us input. I really wish we could parlay that into like some residents getting on boards and like more participation in general, but you know, I guess I'm very hopeful and optimistic on that front. One of the pieces of feedback that really caught my attention was a, was a, members of the school suggesting that our city and school resources are strained. I have not seen anything to suggest that our city resources are strained. In fact, from my perspective, I think we're doing pretty well, based on good planning and good, smart fiscal budgeting. So I guess, Joe, I'd like to ask you, is there something I don't know about in terms of our city being strained on our resources?
I wouldn't say our resources are strained. I mean, we have normal growing pains like any growing community, and so we're going to have more need, but we also, as we grow, generate more tax revenue, and so that helps fill that need, and obviously, you know, we are thankful to the voters for approving the removal of the sunset on the recent sales tax for fire and EMS, and those are the types of thing that help ensure that we can keep a qualified and competitive staff to meet those needs, and so, you know, I mean, we're not overly strained in any way. We're just, like anybody else, we're just trying to meet the need with what we have. But to say strained, I mean, that's kind of a tough thing to say, that we're strained. I mean, we're not struggling to meet that need.
Yeah, again, from my perspective, going over the budget, I feel like we've been very smart fiscally, and I can just hope that, you know, I know we had a recent tax levy change for the schools, so hopefully that will help resolve that concern. The only other thing I guess I would mention to the council before we vote is, there's, you know, we've got a recommendation from our Planning Commission, and we've received some, you know, valid feedback from the public, so I think we should consider that before we vote.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
Matt, can you confirm the Lytech tax credit is a ten-year term? Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe it's ten years, and then it can be renewed every ten years.
Gotcha.
But also let the applicant respond to that if they have more information on that.
I mean, I'm just wondering if the removal of the qualified census tract on January one, and this approval coming in under the line, how likely is approval after ten years?
The program would have to change significantly to bring this back into a qualified census tract, so how they figure that program would have to be modified, because they don't believe that our incomes are going to go down to be put back into that census tract.
Gotcha, thank you.
You did say that the developer reached out to the city, correct? And the city did not reach out to the developer?
Yes, the developer reached back out to staff in October with some updates on the qualified census tract, and then that's when they decided to pursue submitting an official pre-application to development staff.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm just going to say, I've got lots of concerns about this project, but the biggest one is the green space and the parkland. And with planning and zoning voting against this, I don't feel I can go against their wishes or the voters.
Go ahead.
You indicated that this is a tax credit to the developer, correct?
Correct.
All right, and this is not Section Eight housing? There are no vouchers involved in this complex, is that correct?
Correct. The way that the program works is essentially the developer gets the tax credit to build a market-rate-style apartment, so the incentive is to the developer, but because of that incentive, they're able to keep the rates at a more affordable level, which is designed to limit the need for vouchers for the tenants.
And you had indicated that the tax credit for Lakeview Terrace had expired, and those have gone to the full rental.
Correct, so, yeah, so last year, all of the tenants that did live there, their leases were not renewed, so they either had to renew and pay the higher rate or find housing elsewhere.
Do you know whether or not there are significant vacancies in the Lakeview Terrace apartment complex?
That I do not know.
And then you indicated that part of the reason for the staff's recommendation is that this is underutilized land, is that correct?
Yeah, that was what was identified in the comprehensive plan. Unlike all of the other lands that the Parks Department does maintain that have structural improvements for parks, this has just been kind of used as a temporary open space, not a year-round open space with any other facilities located at it.
And how many other parks are located within walking or biking distance of this proposed project?
So there are three neighborhood parks along Westover, both, or all three just south and east of this property, and then Markey Park is to the southwest.
That's all I have, thank you. And I would echo what Alex said, we do appreciate the feedback from all of the citizens, and we do listen to what you have to say.
Go ahead.
Maybe the individuals might want to attend this. Can you explain why the drop in parking? Because when another development came through, one of my major concerns was the parking and where are they going to park, because you can't expect a three-bedroom apartment to have just one. So that's, I'm concerned about that, because they're going to park on the streets then.
Yeah, so the drop in parking is just strictly because of the size of the property, the number of units that they have on there. My guess is that in order to make the project work, they had to have a certain number of units, but I will let the applicant respond to that if there's any opportunity to lose some units, to add parking, or lose units just to make the parking count work.
Oh, they're going.
Good evening. My name's Donald Maxwell. I'm one of the attorneys for the developer, and I want to say thank you for taking the time to go through the application and the presentation by staff and giving us an opportunity to answer some questions. I had a litany of questions, but staff did a really good job. I had a litany of questions, but staff did a really good job of kind of covering some of the things I was going to say, so kind of to address some of the issues that have come up. And in the interest of time, let me just first address the parking issue. So yet, we are limited in parking because right now this project has about thirty-seven percent green space, where we're only required to have thirty percent. So if we were to shrink down some of the green space, there are some areas in the in the project that could accommodate more parking, and that's something that's ongoing through the discussions with the city and the developer to see if we can accommodate that. That change hasn't been made yet, but we're still considering that, and that can be accomplished. And then also to address one other quick issue about the term of the Lytech. The Lytech term is actually fifteen years, and in order to get the term in, we had to make the application by December 31 of 2024. So now that the application has been submitted, moving forward, once it's approved, it'll have that fifteen-year term. So it's fifteen years after the approval has been made instead of the ten years. And I think additional parking. Oh, and then also, I know there were some concerns that were brought up about the residents and the type of residents that were there. As we mentioned before, Lytech is not a voucher system. The individuals who will live in this residence will have to get pre-qualified. There's a screening process. There's a property manager that's approved by MHDC, along with the federal government, that approves every applicant that's eligible for low-income housing credits. And then those applicants are heavily monitored, so there's an audit, an annual audit, because these are federal tax credits, so the Department of Housing and Urban Development will monitor Missouri Housing Commission, who will monitor the property manager and so on and so forth. So there's ongoing backup to make sure that there aren't any violations of the Lytech.
So I just want to make sure I understand. The tax credit is not to pay for rent. It's only to pay the developer so that way he can offer a lower rent.
Correct, correct. And with that, I'll address any other questions that the council has for the developer.
Hold on a minute. Go ahead.
I guess my biggest concern is that I'm, when I'm, I'm listening to Matt, and thank you for your staff for doing all this, and thank you for all the public input we had and have had. I, I'm looking at, these seem to be service houses. These are for working folks who who need houses. And we we know, I've heard a lot from my ward that we need houses. So to me, this just is is sort of a logical step for for housing shortage that we have. And and I like the fact that it's for service, it's for people who are working.
Correct, ma'am. It's this is what we call workforce housing, and the the concept is that we build housing to the same standard that you would affordable or market-rate housing, but make it more affordable for workforce housing. So we're marketing this to teachers, healthcare workers, folks that are working in the northern industrial park, those kind of folks that are in need of affordable housing.
Are working for the city of Belton.
Or working for the city of Belton, yes.
What's in the plan? One of the things I've heard rumor-wise is that, and I will be nice, I won't say what I've heard, is that they don't want places like this to come in because of increased crime. And they mentioned a couple other apartment complexes that had a high crime rate. And so what are we doing, or what do you guys plan to make sure that the crime rate is minimal?
Yeah, thank you for for raising that issue. Actually, I had that in my notes, and I skipped over it because I was trying to be fast. But one of the cooperative agreements that that the developers entered into is one with the Hope Haven House of, or Hope Haven of Cass County, which is a domestic violence prevention organization. As a result of that, they're going to offer housing for the victims of domestic violence. And in partnership with Hope Haven, one of the things that will be done on this project will have surveillance, and that surveillance will be piped into the Belton Police Department. So Belton Police Department will have twenty-four-hour surveillance of the facility. It'll be a DVD backup, so we can access if there are crimes committed, there there's a video surveillance of that. And this is one, one of the things that we're doing to keep the domestic violence victims safe or or try to prevent harm to them, but it also will create a situation where Belton PD will have access to the entire site and will be able to monitor the entire site.
Are you saying that that's a live feed?
Correct.
And has the police chief been discussed that with?
This is the first time I've been, I've heard this.
I would advise to have conversations if you're going to have a live feed.
May want to chat, yeah. But no, it's my understanding that that that's ongoing conversations as part of what we're negotiating with Hope Haven of Cass County.
There's a kink in your live feed. It's that live feed, now I'm being sarcastic, but yeah, let's have a conversation.
Yeah, Hope Haven is not the Belton Police Department.
Go ahead.
Hey, I talked to Mr. Finn last week, and you said that Mr. Donovan Jones is not the developer of this?
That is correct. He's not. He's the lobbyist.
Who is the developer?
There's a group of investors that are all working together. It's the Commons of Belton is the developer on this project.
Okay.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
I'm still struggling with the parking. To me, it sounds dangerous when people are going to now be parking on Westover because you can't expect nowadays families, married couples got at least two cars. And if you're talking about working class, you're not talking about other. So how are we going to resolve that? Because I, I'm struggling with that, and that, you know, I was listening, it sounded pretty good until I got that parking thing, and then that's really hugging me up.
Right, so so something that hasn't been mentioned is that, well, it was it was briefly mentioned that residents will be restricted to one parking space per unit without consent of the property manager. And that element was included to prevent the, to control the type of parking that's going onto the space. So what we're trying to prevent are trailers and boats and things like that that would occupy parking outside of vehicles. So we, once households with more than one vehicle request consent to have additional parking, that's going to be granted if it's a motor vehicle, a car, motorcycle, whatever they have, but not for trailers, RVs, and so forth.
Can you remind, because I'm old, can you remind me the number of apartments versus the number of parking spaces?
I'm going to defer to staff.
So it's two hundred and fifty-two units, and there are three hundred and fifty-nine parking spaces, which is nineteen short of the code, which is one and a half spaces per unit.
So they're short of the code?
Correct.
I have a couple follow-ups to Matt. The issue of traffic was brought up. Is there, is the road sufficient to cover the additional traffic? Will Westover handle the additional traffic that will arise from this apartment development?
Yeah, there was a traffic analysis done with the overall AM and peak time traffic generation, which is normal for an apartment complex. Westover is also a collector street, which is designed to handle that additional traffic. And generally, the the flow of traffic would likely be 255th Street or Marquee Road, which is also designed to handle that traffic. Additionally, overall, the, I don't have the traffic counts, but I would imagine that the overall traffic on this part of Westover has seen a decline over the last several decades with the closure of the base. So overall, the road was designed fifty, sixty years ago to handle this type of traffic.
And then one other follow-up question on infrastructure. The water and sewer can handle this additional number of units?
There are some improvements that will be made to accommodate that, which is common for development, but yes, based on the improvements that they will be making, it will be designed to handle the additional flow.
Thank you, that's all.
You you said that this land was underutilized by the parks, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and and where do you guys come up with that? And the only reason I'm saying this, I, my oldest son's twenty-nine, and I mean, we used it a lot back when he was practicing. I mean, this is fifteen, twenty years ago, but we use it a lot because it was hard to find fields to practice on, especially during the season when you're, you know, there's games going on. I mean, we use it a lot for practice, so.
Yeah, we we base out that off of the conference of plan update, which did identify, do an analysis of properties that the city owns, specifically identified properties that were potential redevelopment or underutilized properties for redevelopment. And this was specifically identified because when you drive by, if there's nobody there, it looks like vacant ground.
And parks is, but they've been maintaining it, haven't they?
Yes, they have.
And is is parks not using it that much, or?
They are.
I was, I was just wondering from parks if they could comment on it, if they if they want to.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
I don't know that it's super appropriate to 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 point out the the parks component. The parks is not the, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the council are the land use deciders for the city. That's that's how it's set up in our code. And I mean, the issue with parks, yes, there's green space, yes, we have we have a comprehensive plan, it addresses those types of things. And so I would try to lean on that rather than getting into the whole whether parks uses it or not, doesn't use it.
A quick question. I went to the open house last week for parks with their master plan, and they had improvements for that spot. So I'm not sure why we would update, I mean, take the green space.
I'm trying to figure out, how are we going to negotiate this issue with the parking? Because that's, it's holding me up. So, and I did that metaphorically to say, you're holding up, because I, it's a risk to me when people can't park in the, and I know you say blah, 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 but still, if everyone has two cars, I mean, everyone can get in the parking spot. And so they're going to park somewhere, and it's going to be on Westover. And that concerns me.
Well, one one thing we can do is we can, we can get the additional nineteen spaces needed in order to make, be code compliant by reducing the green space, which the developer is willing to do. Now, with additional parking, we don't anticipate there being a one-for-one when it comes to unit count, and so we think that with the additional nineteen to twenty spaces that can be added, that that would be sufficient.
Is there parking allowed on Westover at, near this complex?
On occasion, I've seen parking, but they usually pull up on the curb when they're when they're using the field for soccer.
I can address the green space a little bit. I know we touched on that briefly, and I understand losing green space is never a popular idea. We are partnering with Calvary on this this project, and and with that, I spoke with the president of the university, he's actually here this evening as well, and we will have the ability to utilize their fields at the same time just across the street north of Bong. Part of this project, we're working with them, is to improve their soccer field, and right now it needs some love. So what's going to happen with this project? We'd be able to cross the street and improve that field, create some irrigation, and what that will do is create an opportunity for them to bring in a girls' soccer team for their college, and it'll create another nineteen scholarships for girls to go to school over there as well. So with that, we feel like that's a great improvement, and then the ability to allow our city to use, our kids to use that area as well. They'd have to coordinate with them, obviously, but to be able to use that space would be a great olive branch as well.
Do you know if they would be a charge or free to the kids to use that space?
Let me ask him real quick.
Is it free or a charge? They are welcome on our campus at any time.
Anybody else?
I'm going to make this, can I make a motion that we postpone the vote until two weeks? I'm really struggling with this, and I would like to have time to digest the data, so that way I can provide the best vote I can do, rather than go on a spur-of-the-moment emotional vote. Because I, you know, they presented a data that's not necessarily the same type of data that was presented in other hearings, and so I just want to be able to digest that.
Council member, would that be a motion to postpone the first reading of this bill till the June tenth city council meeting?
Yes.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second to postpone. Any discussion on the motion to postpone?
Yeah, yeah, I guess this is a first reading, right? So if this were to pass, there would be two weeks built in, right? So I guess that's.
I just hate to turn something down if I'm not going to turn it down. Or I'd hate to, I'd hate to pass something that I eventually turned down because I can't resolve it.
Yeah, if if it fails tonight, it will not come back again. If it passes tonight, it would have to come back for a second reading into, June tenth.
The other discussion on the motion to postpone till next meeting. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails. So we are back to the motion on approving the first reading of Bill 2025 dash twenty-nine. Any more discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? All opposed?
Nay.
Item two, motion approving the first reading of Bill 2025 dash thirty.
An ordinance approving the vacation of Autumn Ridge Office Park Final Plat located at the southwest corner of South Mullen Road and Silver Maple Drive in the city of Belton, Cass County, Missouri.
Present.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? You're up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before this evening is a request for the vacation of the Autumn Ridge Office Park Final Plat, which was approved and recorded in June 2008. Although no public or private improvements were made with this approval, staff believes it is most appropriate to officially vacate the final plat so that the Creekstone and Autumn Ridge final plat is clear. The ordinance vacating the final plat must be recorded with the final plat of Creekstone and Autumn Ridge, and staff recommends approval of the vacation.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, motion approving the first reading of Bill 2025 dash thirty-one.
An ordinance approving a final plat for Creekstone at Autumn Ridge, a five-lot and one-track residential plan on nine-point-eight-one more-or-less acres located west of South Mullen Road and south of the Smoky Hill Railroad tracks in the city of Belton, Cass County, Missouri.
Present. Second.
Motion is second. You're still up.
Yep, before this evening is a request for the final plat of Creekstone and Autumn Ridge, which is a five-lot and one-track residential subdivision on nine-point-eight-one acres located west of South Mullen Road and south of the Smoky Hill Railroad tracks. The final plat covers the final phase of the Autumn Ridge subdivision. Lots one through three include a one-hundred-and-forty-four-unit apartment development. Lots four and five are two single-family lots. And then Track A includes amenities that will serve the apartments, but may also be accessible to the remainder of the subdivision at the developer's discretion. The Planning Commission reviewed and recommended approval of final plat on May sixth. The Planning Commission also reviewed and approved the final development plan for the apartment development. Staff recommends approval of the final plat subject to the conditions in the ordinance.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Just, can you remind me, we, I thought we already discussed the plat previously, or was that just zoning that we had discussed previously for this?
So the, there was a final, a rezoning and a final development plan, a preliminary development plan approved by the council back in January, and then I believe it was at the last meeting that I mentioned at the work session that this would be coming this evening.
Okay, for some, okay, I thought we, all right, I'm, I'm good.
Anybody else? Anything? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, motion approving the first reading of bill 2025 dash 32.
An ordinance approving a development and maintenance agreement between the city of Belton and Autumn Ridge Homes LLC for public and private infrastructure for Creekstone and Autumn Ridge, lots one through three and tract A.
Present. Second.
Motion and a second. You're still here.
Before this evening is a request for approval of a development maintenance agreement for Creekstone and Autumn Ridge. Um, this agreement outlines the developer's responsibilities for the long-term maintenance of all private improvements on the multifamily lots and tract A, uh, which include parking lot, maintenance, landscaping, and amenities. Um, this agreement also includes the construction phasing for the apartment buildings and amenities, um, as well as the option for the developer to allow tract A to be utilized by all Autumn Ridge residents. Um, if approved, this agreement must be recorded with the final plat and staff recommends approval.
Any questions?
I have something. We had, we had to open a public hearing about this and we did have families that came that had questions that were addressed, that had, and I, I felt they were all addressed about even this part of it.
Yes, we, um, all the amenities have been addressed in there, which was one of the, the questions and concerns. Um, additionally, the tract A has been, eh, plotted separately to allow that to be potentially needed over to the overall HOA.
Yep.
Um, and maintained by them for the benefit of the entire community.
Somebody over here? Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, motion approving the first reading of bill 2025 dash 33.
An ordinance authorizing the approval of a software access agreement between the Belt and Fire Department, the Cass County Emergency Services Board, and Central Square Technologies LLC.
Present.
Second.
Motion and a second. You're up, sir.
Good evening. Uh, you guys recently approved the, um, the spending and the agreement with the company that's gonna install our, uh, station, uh, alerting systems. Uh, that alerting system has to speak to the, uh, dispatch software and ESB is the body that controls that and runs the, uh, the dispatching system. So we had to have their approval in an agreement along with Central Square, which is the software that our computer aided dispatch runs through. So this is just a formality to help make that new installation work well and speak through that, uh, through the CAD system. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Go ahead. Um, we, s, last time we spoke about the ESB was quite some time ago, um, that, or, well, let me be more clear. Last time we spoke about who is on the board of the ESB was quite some time ago. Do we still have a representative from Belton specifically on that board?
Our, there is, uh, who's from Belton? We have, um.
I, I can give you the name I was told last time.
Go ahead.
It was Dean Van Winkle.
Yeah, no, he's no longer on it. He stepped down. We have, uh, Mark Lopez, which is a, guard, is the Garden City and Pleasant Hill Chief, Eric Smith, which is an assistant chief at, uh, South Metro Fire Protection District. You have the sheriff. You have, uh, Mr. Turnbo, mayor of Raymore on it. You have, there is no, no, there is no Belton. There are two others, but there is not another Belton.
Hold on. There is Jimmy Odom, who is a resident of Belton, is, was.
He was appointed and replaced Dean Van Winkle.
That's right, my apologies, I forgot about that.
Oh, alright.
Yep, he made, made his first meeting last, last month, so yeah.
Okay, alright.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, motion approving resolution 2025 dash 045.
A resolution authorizing the withdrawal of membership from Midwest Public Risk of Missouri for workers' compensation insurance by the city of Belton, Missouri.
Present. Second.
Motion and a second.
The mayor and council has reviewed detail at the last city council meeting. We did a diligent review of workers' compensation, property liability, and cybersecurity, um, insurance and determined that the best coverage at the best cost would be to continue cyber property and liability through mid, Midwest Public Risk and move workers' compensation to Midwest Employers Mutual, which is MEM. Um, as you can see, the total projected savings for the benefit year is $346,000 for those lines of coverage. Um, staff recommends keeping those as I outlined and we did provide, um, written intent. And so this resolution would just approve us and authorize us withdrawing for workers' compensation.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Just no changes from our work session discussion, right? That almost still stands?
Correct.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Seven, motion approving resolution 2025 dash 046.
A resolution approving a contract for services between the city of Belton, Missouri, and Superior Bowen Asphalt Company LLC for the 2025 street preservation project and authorizing the execution of the same on behalf of the city.
Present. Second.
Motion and a second. You're up.
This is a contract with Superior Bowen to do our paving. Um, as outlined, we have, uh, in, I think it's April 22, we got a passage of bonds to do, uh, $21 million worth of paving. We paved in '22 and '23, we did not pave in '24, and this will conclude all the paving that was in that bond issuance. Um, included in the contract is the list of the streets, it's also posted on our website. There's also a map included of where it is. Over the last couple of months, uh, we have been replacing curbs throughout the city. Um, there's also curbs that were replaced two years ago and, uh, and in those areas we didn't, we're not, we were unable to get back and pave it right away. But we will be paving all those streets from two years ago and the streets you saw right now that, um, have, had had their curbs replaced. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Anybody? You did say there's a list in the.
There's a list in there. It's also, if you go to the Pollard Works website, we have a capital improvements map. You can click on the map and you'll see the, the area to click in and bring up a whole map of where we're paving at.
Go ahead.
Just a quickie. Uh, how will you notify residents or how will residents be notified that their area's being done?
So we require the contractor to put door hangers on everybody's house, uh, before they do it, at least 48 hours before they pave. Usually try to get there about a week ahead of time to notify people that they're gonna pave so nobody parks in the street. Because if you parked in the street when we come to pave, we're gonna be knocking on doors and knocking on doors and then eventually, if we have to, we can have to tow people away. It's really not been a problem for us.
Anybody else?
I have a question, um, on the repaving. Main Street, I mean, are there any plans to fix downtown Main Street?
So Main Street's like a lot of streets throughout the city that, um, we just haven't gotten to. Uh, Main Street, we're actually looking at right now on how to make improvements to it, including the curbs and sidewalks on it to try to make a complete, um, rehabilitation of the street. And hopefully in the next, uh, few months or year, we'd be able to bring back a plan of what we could do for it to make it, to rehabilitate the whole thing.
Potholes and when they do festivals like this weekend with Kerry Nation.
The places where there, um, the parking stops where people park and their front wheels go in, we are gonna try to do some more work to get that fixed up.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
I'm gonna get this question, so I might as well just head it off and ask it now. Um, Meadow Creek Parkway, uh, when that begins, what is the traffic plan or how's that gonna, can you help me, what, cause there's only one way in and out there? Um, how, how's that gonna work?
Um, normally we, they just work on one side of the road at a time and they'll flag traffic on the other side.
Perfect, thank you. As I know I'm gonna get that question. Um, and the only other question I have is, uh, how quickly are they gonna get started?
Uh, one of the reasons that we have this contract set up this way is that they will be able to start, cause the contract, concrete contractor is supposed to end this week. He has a couple of other things to do, like a sidewalk on 163rd Street and things that we're not paving around, but he's supposed to be done this week and so we can get this contract done. He can turn in the final paperwork, a schedule, and he'd be, we'd issue a notice proceeding first week in June.
Awesome, thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Eight, motion approving resolution 2025 dash 047.
A resolution approving task agreement number 41, amendment number one, for Olson Acres sanitary sewer extension between the city of Belton, Missouri and Wilson and Company, Inc., engineers and architects, and authorizing the execution of the same on behalf of the city.
Present.
Second.
Motion and a second. You're up.
This resolution is to improve a, basically a change or supplemental agreement, uh, for Wilson and Company. As we started this project, the beginning of the project, uh, the idea was to run the sewer south, uh, at a 45 degree angle through the property to the south of it. Uh, the property at the time would not negotiate with us. Uh, it's outside the city, so we didn't really feel comfortable coming and trying to condemn somebody to force a sewer line through their property. They have horses and there's a whole bunch of other issues that, um, we're unable to reconcile with that person. For that reason, we redesigned the project to actually go down 187th Street. It's gonna utilize a force main to do it, to pump the, uh, product up the hill and into our main that would be along North Cass. Uh, with this new design, it would also be available for us if there's development to the west of Olson Acres, that we'd actually be able to hook our sewer into it and be able to, uh, get, get that waste, uh, down to the plant using this facility. Um, this amount of money will be reimbursed once we go to contract with DNR. DNR will reimburse us for this money. Uh, in their model, basically we have to expend the money to get the design, uh, get the design done. Once we get to construction and bid the job, then DNR gives us the money for the construction and they refund all of our costs for the design. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Can you explain why this, we're doing this and it's not in the city, please?
So, um, Olson Acres sits on the south edge of town, right there, 187th Street and Mullen. Uh, that community was, um, they had a lagoon, the lagoon was full and waste was going off the lagoon into adjoining property owners' property. Um, it is a, a problem for the area, it's the number one problem in Cass County for Missouri DNR. They came to us to request help on how to resolve the issue. The only way we could really, uh, resolve the issue was by connecting, uh, their main to us and sending it to the plant. And so we agreed to do it. It's about 20 houses. It won't really cause us any problems, uh, to make that connection.
Questions? Go ahead.
Is this plan actually better than the original one? Since you now said, well, if they start building on the other side, blah, blah, blah.
Probably. I mean, for us in the long run, it's gonna be better. The only problem is we own another force main.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
I know the answer to this, but I'm gonna ask it anyways. Why is that a problem, that we own another force main?
Uh, cause force mains require maintenance and pump replacements. And so you'll see in a couple of weeks, we will have a, uh, force main pump replacement on the agenda and it's $70,000 to replace the pump.
And what's the expected, like, um, time those last? Lifespan, there's a word I couldn't think of.
That's a very dependent question, um, because it depends on what people flush down the toilets. So if they use it correctly, and I know we had this discussion before, uh, if they use it correctly and don't flush down other items that are non-flushable, um, the pumps can last, uh, 10 years or more. If people continue to flush things down the sewer that do not belong to go down the sewer, um, we've had them burn out in less than two years.
We'd be charging these citizens?
Yes, I assume we'll do the same charge we do for other people who are outside the city who connect to the main. We have to get with the local water district to make those charges.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
Just, just to back up one statement that, that Greg was making about the, what, as long as people put the things down the drain that they're supposed to put down the drain, uh, just as the, a public service announcement, in case people didn't realize this, flushable wipes don't exist. There's no such thing. If it says flushable on it, it doesn't mean it's flushable. They still gum up the works, they'll, they'll mess up your service lines, they'll mess up our main lines and so don't use flushable wipes, they're not flushable. Or you can use them, just don't flush them down the toilet.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Nine, motion approving resolution 2025 dash 48.
A resolution approving the purchase of a skid steer loader for the wastewater treatment plant from Casey Bobcat, Alatha, Kansas, and authorizing the execution of the same on behalf of the city.
Present. Second.
Motion and a second. You're still here.
Still here. This is a, uh, purchase of a Bobcat for our treatment plant. Um, it was done through a purchasing agreement through the Missouri Department of Transportation and, uh, we also looked at other ones. We have, uh, use other purchasing agreements. Uh, we had this one, we had one from Caterpillar and this was the best priced one. And so we recommend purchase this, um, Bobcat.
Go ahead.
This wasn't in the budget, correct?
That is correct.
Beat me to my question.
I didn't look at you first this time.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Gee, consent agenda, one motion not available to approve the recommendations noted, any member of the council may ask for the item to be taken from the consent agenda for discussion in separate action.
I'd like to remove five.
Oh, slow down, slow down. Go ahead.
I'd like to remove five. Don't we have to present it first before we have discussion on?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, so present.
Okay, I second it.
A motion and a second. Now you can say what you wanna say, alright. Any other discussion? Go ahead. Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, motion approving resolution 2025 dash 51.
A resolution appointing Patty Johnson as the city council liaison to the tourism council.
Present.
Second.
A motion and a second.
Can I ask my question?
Yes, you can.
I'm just, when I read, I mean, congrats, is she replacing your spot on the board?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I was unsure if it was, or councilman.
No, she's, she's replacing me.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Five, motion approving resolution 2025 dash 052.
A resolution appointing Wanda Thompson as the city council liaison to the public arts commission.
Present.
Second.
Motion and a second.
I was just wondering, I'm, I am the liaison. I was just wondering why I was being removed? If I could ask that.
Uh, because I'm making changes to stop in the city.
Okay.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Communication from city council, councilmember Johnson.
Just wanted to say that the curb work and my neighborhood and Ward One, area of Ward One is going really well. Uh, great job by all of them and, uh, it was done really quickly. Um, notice was given to everybody, um, and anybody who hadn't moved their car when they were getting ready to do the driveway, they not, made sure they knocked on the door. So it was very helpful and very effective and they were friendly and helpful.
Councilmember McCollum.
I wasn't going to, but now that you brought it up, I'm gonna add to that. I had talked about, there was, I had noticed at one point that they added a, um, sidewalk portion to, across essentially a very small, in the right of way sidewalk portion to go across that should've frankly already been there. Um, so I was very thankful for that, but I, I had asked you one time, um, Greg, why they had put it in and then immediately removed it after it was set and we talked and it was likely a, uh, uh, some kind of mistake that they were then correcting. Well, they have since corrected it and it is now, I just used it and it's, anyways, I'm glad to see that not only are they fixing the curbs, but the related, you know, small, very small portion of, uh, sidewalk there. So I'll just add that, yeah, it's going well. Um, so I have a few things to update, um, from the TDD board. Um, we were informed, so we did meet, uh, for the month of May, we were informed that Um, we were informed, so we did meet uh, for the month of May, we were informed that Mullen Road is officially done. Um, and all that's taking place now is some formalizing of paperwork and finances and that type of thing. Um, and then I think this is relatively exciting news, which is rare for the TDD board. Um, but uh, the North Cass Parkway Extension Plan, that survey work is being done regarding the needed right-of-way. Um, so uh, once that is completed, we'll be able to come up with kind of a good faith offer for um, that right-of-way land. So that's exciting, that's moving in a positive direction. Um, and then I have update from Parks. So, um, so I just want to say that I, I want to say thank you to everyone that came out, provided some public input on the Parks Master Plan that took place, uh, that open house they had last week, I think, I don't know, my time's going fast, if, I think it was last week, yeah, Brian's nodding his head. Um, and um, and there will be a meeting um, this Thursday, the twenty-ninth, uh, six o'clock here in the council chambers per the, you know, normal time, um, for a presentation on the master plan. So if anyone wants to attend, you are always welcome and of course, um, we'll have it recorded. The um, I was not personally able to attend the uh, fishing derby, the kids' fishing derby, but man, did I hear that it was very successful and there was somewhere north of two hundred fish that were caught by those kids, which is crazy to think that there were even that many fish in there, so um, just wanted to point out, that sounded like a really fun event. Um, and just something for people to be aware of later in the year, um, that the uh, park board is looking to repave the asphalt at High Blue as well as have the gym floor redone. Um, if you uh, you know, were unaware of those two things, because of uh, essentially chemicals and things involved with both of those processes, it may involve, may, and I want to say may, because they're still working on a plan, but it may involve uh, having to close High Blue for a day uh, or so, so just wanted to point that out though. Obviously be announced in advance if that's figured out, but just wanted to kind of get those wheels greased in case anyone, you know, I just see the questions coming now. Um, and um, the design and the bid is taking place for the outdoor pickleball courts, which I know at least one council member would love to uh, be aware of. Uh, and then I want to remind everybody, Farmer's Market takes place every Thursday, um, this Thursday is no, no exception. Summer Camp's going to start June second, it'll run weekdays through August eighth. Um, June thirteenth, we'll have Theater in the Park, that's coming back as a reminder, that's a free event we have. Um, the outdoor water park uh, was unfortunately delayed last weekend to open, but it will, now they are planning to open this weekend, um, and again, just due to weather, um, so hopefully weather um, keeps up because we have Kerry Nation Days coming up, which I, I would imagine everybody's well aware of, but just in case you uh, weren't, um, it'll take place Friday and Saturday on Main Street, there's lots of vendors, a foam party, um, live music both the nights, kids tractor pull, pie eating contest, um, a drone show on Saturday night. So there's a lot of things going on and I was, as I was looking through all that, I was sad to see that the hometown heroes competition was not taking place and I'm uh, I'm really hoping it's not because the police were, you know, too afraid to participate in that uh, this year, but uh, I uh, I hope, I hope uh, maybe we'll see a return of that uh, in, in the year's future, so anyways, that's everything I had.
Councilmember Richardson.
Um, I got, Thursday night, we had the mural dedication under I forty-nine, which went great. Um, the artist was there to answer questions, great, great turnout for that. Also Thursday night, I did go to the RJ Candlelight Vigil um, at Memorial Park and Parks did a good job having everything ready. Um, the one thing I want to say on that is the first responders that show up to these things, um, the night that it all happened, I don't think people realize what these first responders go through. Um, it affects a lot of them and if you see them, thank them, because I, it, it's hard, you know, and I, I witnessed it myself, um, but I appreciate all these first responders, the police, the, the fire, Cass County, Lee Summons, I believe, showed up. Um, it's a lot and it's a lot for them to deal with, so it affects them not just that night, but for time to come. So I appreciate all the first responders.
Um, I'll echo Alex's enthusiasm and invitation for folks to get out for Kerry Nation Days. Bringing back the drone show is going to be a big draw, it was really cool last year and, correct me if I'm wrong, Liverpool Legends was here for the one fiftieth?
Correct.
Yeah, uh, they're really fun, so thanks, looking forward to it.
Um, I attended uh, the open house tonight for the Cass County Dental Clinic, um, very nice facilities. And also for Kerry Nations, there's three young girls up for Miss Belton and they brought back the little Miss Prince and Princess this year and I believe they have almost seventy children registered for that.
Um, once again, we've worked on Main Street Coalition stuff, we will be holding um, regular monthly meetings that the publics will be invited to, if you're interested in seeing what's going on in this coalition. Um, we'll be posting our dates, it's the second Tuesday, third Tuesday of every month at four o'clock at a rotate, rotating location, but we will have that out, we're, we're very interested in public input and what we're trying to accomplish, so we'd love to see you.
Uh, we're working on Ward Four date uh, for our town hall meeting, it'll be towards the end of June. Um, also, I want to uh, say something to uh, give Brian a pitch if he wants it. Uh, do you still looking for people to work camps and?
No, we're full, the only thing we need is pie eaters, Brett, and you just got signed up.
I gotta just pump my insulin up and then I'll be there.
Right up your alley, too.
Yeah.
Brett, we do need some lifeguards, Brett, that's about all we need.
That was the second thing I was going to ask.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, um, with that, uh, I think I'm done for the moment.
Alright.
I might interrupt later, though.
Alright, uh, I also attended the dental clinic, uh, ribbon cutting, uh, of course, I didn't get to see the ribbon cutting because I had to get back here, but uh, it's a great place, great deal for Cass County, Belton and the region, so get out and look at it, it's a pretty neat building, a lot better than what they were in down here on Mullen, so great place. Uh, and just to reiterate everybody's saying, Kerry Nation Days, hope everybody can get out and support it and enjoy and have fun. City manager.
I don't have anything that hasn't been said already, thanks.
Items for review and discussion, one stop sign at Mill and Cleveland. Where you going, Mr. Clark?
Up here. There it is, okay. It's been trying to jump up there through the whole meeting, but uh, so I have a short presentation to talk about Mill and Cleveland and traffic control. Um, I've had uh, several people over the last couple of years ask me about it, uh, and I know some of you are asking about what we should do to improve uh, traffic flow and pedestrian safety in the area. Um, so we've had requests made for better traffic control, uh, concerns about the elementary school children crossing in the morning and afternoon, and there's also concerns about how the high schoolers are crossing uh, the road. And we're going to try to take a look at all these, but first I want to just do kind of a brief little history, I don't want to spend a lot of time. I do have two little videos to show you, so I'm trying to be totally inclusive here of everything. So this comes out of the comprehensive plan, I steal all the best data all the departments create. And um, if you look at it, the city, believe it or not, does have a grid system and the center of our grid right now is basically at um, uh, North Scott and South Scott at fifty-eight highway, but the city was created with definite places where there's natural arterials, natural secondary arterials and there are residential collectors. And so at these spots is where there's the most activities and most cars and most people going through them. Uh, so at the location we're talking about is, on the north side of it is Route fifty-eight or North Avenue and then the intersection we're talking about is like Cleveland and Mills. So Cleveland is really like a secondary arterial, it's one of those one mile markers, the same thing as Prospect, the same thing as uh, Holmes and other streets throughout the city. Uh, Mill Street is a residential collector and so you have at this location, intersection of uh, two streets that have had a lot of different vehicles at different times that pass through it. Um, at this location, in one corner, you have the high school, another corner, you have Yocum Center, another corner, you have Mill Creek Elementary, another corner, you have uh, Grace Early, uh, Early Childhood Center. And so there's different pieces of education all the way through here and uh, and it's built on a place that has uh, has traffic going through it. Um, so what is the problem? And I kind of already summed it up, the kids crossing to and from school and the concern from the kids kind of crossing at random times. Uh, so we went out there and took a site visit, I've been out there many times, I've sat and watched the kids cross, I've sat and watched the high schoolers cross, I've walked when the kids walk across and, and everything like that. Uh, and there are certain things that um, stand out when we go out there and look. Uh, the first, there are no sidewalks on Mill Street uh, for neither Yocum Center or the Grace uh, Early Childhood Center. So when the kids leave uh, Mill Creek Elementary, you've probably seen it, they go across the intersection, then they have to walk in the street until they get past the school and then they can get on the sidewalk. Uh, there are no restrictions where kids can cross on Cleveland, the kids can basically cross anywhere they want. There's nothing that defines it and forces them to cross at one spot. It doesn't matter what age the kids are, they could be elementary school age kids, they can be the high school kids who are out there, they can cross anywhere they want. Uh, elementary school kids uh, must cross Cle- Cleveland because they live on one side of the road and the school's on the other side of the road. And the high school kids, they cross randomly, uh, there's no better way to put it than that.
And they drive randomly.
Yeah, I wasn't asked to look into that, so. So some of the things that we looked at is um, this piece of sidewalk that would be very helpful. It's uh, about six hundred feet of sidewalk that goes from Cleveland over to um, past Yocum's entrance so that the kids have a place to walk, right now they're walking in Mill Street, very few kids actually walk up the driveway and around. They all just, they take the path of least resistance, which is straight across there. So some considerations should be made uh, for the school district to um, put in this sidewalk. Uh, the second one is the driveway that is uh, that goes into basically the high school and into the elementary school. It is offset from the intersection. It's a very awkward situation there, I'm sure many of you or all of you have driven it and when you come out, uh, you have to kind of weigh who's going when, uh, because it isn't a four-way stop. It's not even a four-way intersection, it's a three-way intersection at Mill with a driveway off to the side. When you get out there, you know, the, the elementary school does a wonderful job getting all the kids to go up to the crosswalk and crossing at one location to get across the street. Uh, it'd be really helpful if this wasn't offset, if this uh, driveway was made to be uh, right there, uh, right across from Mill Street. I think it would solve a lot of different issues. No, would not cut into the baseball field. Uh, and I know there's funky lines on here, but the yellow line is the line that basically the high schoolers take. Now, I realize it's actually a much wider berth because they won't go like this as they're looking at their phones going up and down through there. Uh, it'd be ideal if they followed the blue path, if they'd go up and cross at the crosswalk. And so what we would propose, as you can see the green line, would be some sort of fence in that area to restrict the travel, so that would force them to go and use the actual crosswalk and cross at one place. Uh, it may be necessary to put a fence on the other side, uh, as people come the other direction. I mainly saw the kids crossing headed toward the high school. Um, but it's something to consider to, to force everybody to use the crosswalk and cross at one location so drivers would know where people are crossing and not just be a haphazard crossing of the area. It's about four hundred fifty feet of fencing that had to be put in. Um, you know, last, last meeting, we talked about RRFBs, uh, rectangular rapid flashing beacons, hopefully this will work. I got a little demonstration that shows this. Oh, the volume's not on. But this is basically showing someone going up to the beacon, they can press it. Um, the pattern that the beacon flashes at is random, it's not a set pattern, so it gets your eye attention. It flashes when people see the traffic has stopped, then they can cross the street and they can cross the street safely. Just shows it going off, they gave a really nice description. Uh, it also shows how kids can get out there, what makes sure the traffic is stopped and then they can cross and you can see how it looks from the perspective of a car as someone goes through there. This is something we're going to be putting up there at Cedar and Main. Okay, there's also something called a hawk signal. Now hawk signal is a signal that's used at pedestrian crossings when traffic signals are not warranted and it allows traffic to come to a stop. And this is a little demonstration video of it, it shows a intersection where cars are passing through it. The signal will first flash and it'll flash a yellow light warning you that something's about to happen. It's going to go to a solid yellow like a traffic signal to tell you it's about to go red and then it goes red. We're always required to have two red lights at every traffic signal in case one goes out. In this case, after it goes solid red, the signal will flash just like a regular stop sign. So as you approach it and the person's already crossed, you're free to go through the flashing red because it's a stop sign. After it's done and it's timed out to allow people to travel all the way across, then uh, you're able to go. It just goes back blank again and that's another option of things you can add. Uh, the last thing I was asked to look at is the possibility of having a multi-way or all-way stop. Uh, that would be a three-way or a four-way stop, if we could get that intersection moved up, it could be an all, uh, four-way stop. Um, normally, in order to install four-way stops, they're controlled by the MUTC, the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, tells us when and where to put in stop control. Um, and these are the five items that they say this is when you install one. And the first one is if you have crashed data, five or more crashes in twelve-month period, that intersection actually luckily does not have five or more accidents in a twelve-month period. Uh, you install a multi-way stop when you have sight distance problems, so people need to come to a, a stop to be able to see. Uh, this current location is very flat and has great sight distance. Uh, transition to a traffic signal, so if a traffic signal is warranted, but you can't get it in because you don't have the parts, takes you a year to get all that stuff, uh, you can put a all-way stop in before a traffic signal is installed. Uh, D is eight-hour volume warrants, you have to have three hundred units that can be pedestrians, bikes or cars or trucks uh, for at least eight hours in the major street and it requires two hundred units for at least eight hours in the minor street. Uh, currently at uh, Cleveland and Mill, we have less than two hundred and less than fifty on the side road. And so we didn't meet the volume requirements for any of those. And then the last one is other factors where engineering study shows it is needed. And so you have to find a definite purpose for why this is needed, more than just like, this is kind of what I want. And so there's different options of things that we could do. Um, one of the things that, you know, I know a lot of people want to jump to an all-way stop is that always stops uh, work for a while, but as we know, always stops when people recognize they're not needed, they start running it. So when we talked about, was it last year, year before, over there at Given in Bradford, there's an all-way stop there that complains people are running it, well, they're running because it's not warranted. And so I, my concern is that if we put an all-way stop here, that people will just, over a period of time, begin to run it, considering that for months of the year, many hours during the day, it's, there's no need for it. And so uh, really comes down to what is the direction we want to go as a community to make this the better intersection. Now, I went and I looked all throughout our community and went, looked in Johnson County, looked in other cities, I've done them in Kansas City. The, the thing that most people use for crossings in front of schools are hawk signals. And I realize it's probably the most expensive of all the options, but um, that is one of the things I would recommend is looking at that because it's, it's only activated when the kids are there, they press the button and it comes on. Now that would require us to put the fence up, force the kids to go to the place, force them to hit the button, but it would definitely stop the cars so people could, could uh, get across the intersection and um, and then when it's not needed, it's not on. But I'm happy to, it's just my little presentation this evening, I'm happy to have any discussion you'd like to have.
Go ahead.
I was just going to mention that those hawk signals, some districts actually even employ a secure, uh, traffic guard or a traffic signal person to actually hit the button and they'll keep people at the sides until they get enough people and then they hit the button and help them across with a stop sign in their hand.
Crosswalk people there ever?
Yes, there are crosswalk, there's a crosswalk person there during, when the elementary school kids cross in the morning and afternoon, they are escorted across the street.
But that's after middle school and high school are already in, correct? Elementary goes last, correct?
Yes, I, I just, I've just been there when he's there, uh, I have.
Um, I was gonna say, I've seen the Hawk signal and the rapid flashers both. Um, and the Hawk signals I think are way more effective as a driver and someone who crosses a busy intersection sometimes. Um, I think that the fencing and the sidewalk would be such a nice solution over there for such a high-traffic area with our kids. So thank you for all the details you put into presenting this. Um, hopefully a combination of things will be done.
So since this is on school property, can we, how, how, how is that gonna work?
I'd, I'd really like to, I haven't had a chance to, uh, speak to the school district directly about what the solution is. But, uh, if you guys have a plan such as putting up a fence, putting in the sidewalk and doing a Hawk signal. The next step would be us to then meet with the school district and say, here's, here's a plan we have for the intersection of how we can make these improvements. And then look to see how we could fund it together and come up with some sort of partnership. I mean, you think I'm?
Yes, when, uh, when this came about through the city and I think Councilman Richardson brought it up first. Um, we briefly discussed it at, uh, school board and, and with the superintendent. So we're waiting, that side is waiting on us to, to, to get together, so, so we're waiting.
How's, how tall a fence are you talking?
Uh, tall enough that the high schoolers just just jump over it, four foot. And, and I would say, you know.
They will jump over and they will climb six foot, you know.
So in Springfield, Missouri, where they did do extensive fencing, uh, through the universities to prevent the kids from jaywalking across many of their five-lane roads. Um, they did use six-feet wrought iron fences. I mean, it looked pretty, you can put bushes on them and make them look attractive, but still achieve the goal of what you're looking for.
Concertina wire is probably not a solution, would I say?
Not quite yet, no.
Hey, I, I like the Hawk system too. I think that's probably gonna be the, the best option from what I've seen, so I'm for that. And thanks, Greg.
Yeah, this was a really good presentation from a, um, perspective of cost difference. I mean, we, you said that's probably the most expensive option, but what is like, what are we talking on a delta here and a difference between the options?
Well, uh, the flashing, uh, sign that we're gonna put in, those range about forty thousand dollars, including all the maintenance. I mean, the installation costs. The, um, Hawk signal is probably close to two hundred thousand dollars.
That's a bit of a difference.
But is one more, I, I appreciate the cost effective, the cost analysis part of it, but which would be the most cost-effective as far as safety of the children?
The Hawk signal is, is the direction everybody's gone.
I have one other question too, real quick, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Having driven across there with a high school kid with that offset driveway, is there any way that can get, so it's straight across Mill instead of having that offset?
I will definitely have that conversation with them.
That would be wonderful.
Um, okay, two questions. Have we had any applications for the, um, sidewalk cost share program? And is there anything that would prevent the school district from participating in that to help make it more palatable?
So I've had people contact me about the sidewalk cost share program, mainly, uh, downtown on Main Street. Uh, but no one else has contacted me about that program. And, uh, the idea of the program is actually for repair of existing sidewalks, maintenance.
Shh, just kidding.
But, I mean, it, it, I follow your direction, so if that's something you want us to do, I.
Uh, we earmarked what, a hundred thousand dollars for that?
Correct.
And we've not had any applications? Okay, thanks.
Anybody else?
Just estimate what would it cost to put in that sidewalk?
Uh, I didn't actually calculate that, but it's six hundred feet by four, that'd be five feet times fifty dollars. So just run that quick math, I didn't bring my phone. So.
Write a check.
I don't know why the Pal project money wouldn't be a good use there. I mean, that, to me, that, that money's been sitting there tw- two years, right?
I'm okay with that.
It had, for the record, it was not sitting there for a year, right? Because it was just an expense item.
Yes, but, but we've not had anybody apply for it for two years, have we?
It hasn't been a hundred thousand dollars for two years, it was ten thousand before that. So it's not like.
No, it was sixty.
It was sixty last year.
Sixty, sorry, I know it wasn't a hundred.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Thank you. Two, purchase of a Truenarc Delta handheld analyzer with Missouri opioid settlement funds.
The police department is, uh, proposing the purchase of a Truenarc Delta field analyzer. And you're probably asking what that is, and I'll go through it. Uh, me and the finance director, uh, and assistant city manager, Casey Cohen, actually reached out to, um, the opioid settlement, uh, reporting coordinator for the Missouri Department of Mental Health and asked about some of the, uh, items that we're trying to justify the purchase of this. And so, uh, Ms. Lori Strong-Goki actually gave us an opinion. And when I go through the presentation, I'll, I'll relate to you what she told us. And so the, uh, Truenarc, uh, analyzer is a, uh, device that performs field chemical analysis for law enforcement. And it's a handheld device utilizing, utilizing laser light to look at unknown substances. The device is commonly used to safely identify controlled substances such as fentanyl, which is very dangerous and potentially lethal. Uh, the, during this process, police officers are neither exposed to the substance that they're testing. And it's also, uh, a device that does not destroy the sample. So me, we can actually charge that in court, that sample. Uh, this is the picture of the device. It's about the small as a iPad, the smallest version of iPad or an Android device. It's about as thick as probably an inch and a half. And it has an analyzed device on it. It's made by, uh, Thermo Fisher Scientific, which is a company known for creating scientific equipment. Uh, currently, the Cass County Prosecutor's Office will not prosecute on in custody criminal cases with defendants suspected of possessing controlled substances. This is a problem for us because we are trying, over the course of the last couple of years, trying to impact fentanyl in our community. This device actually tests a large number of, of controlled substances, just not fentanyl. But it can identify how, up to a hundred or more. Uh, we cannot file in custody cases unless we have a criminal, um, lab report. And the only exception that the prosecutor's office will allow for this is if we have a printout from the Truenarc device. Currently in our area, there's several agencies that have them, Cass County I believe has two devices. And we borrow that device on occasion when we want, have an in custody arrest where we really want to make an impact. Or there are some agencies up in Kansas City, but you can just imagine that this device is in high demand. And getting that device and getting it in the hands of our detectives or police officers is sometimes very, very difficult. Staff believes that the purchase of this device, um, can, can be cover, can be covered under the allowable uses, um, in the opioid settlement. Um, under, uh, address the needs of criminal adjusted, criminal justice-involved persons. There is a section where it says that, uh, to address the needs of persons with opioid use disorder, OUD, and other co-occurring substance use disorders or mental health conditions who are involved in or at risk of becoming involved in. Or are transitioning out of the criminal justice system through evidence-based or evidence-formed programs or strategies. That may include, but are not limited to, um, several different things. In short, we believe that this device, we would be able to use it to enter defendants that are at risk of re-offending. When they're out waiting for us to file a case, we can get them into the criminal justice system. They have quicker access to pre-trial diversion and treatment and supervision. And then we can actually take our substances and get the cram analysis report at the normal pace, uh, prior to the trial. And under the settlement, Part One, Section D, Subsection Three states that, uh, the monies are used to support treatment and recovery courts. Um, i.e. the drug treatment. And provide evidence-based options for persons with opioid use disorders or co-occurring substance abuse disorders, mental health conditions. Subsection Six states that critical, uh, supportive critical time intervention, particularly for individuals living with dual diagnosis. And that's people who have a substance abuse problem, but also mental health, uh, issues. And services for those individuals who face imminent risk or service needs. And so, again, we feel that this device would allow us to get in custody arrests for persons that are at risk of re-offending. And get them engaged in services. And then under this section, Part One, Section D, Subsection Two. Uh, we believe that this section will also help out our mental health co-responder, who you're gonna hear from in just a few minutes. Because he also encounters people with mental health issues, but then uncovers a substance use disorder. And sometimes it's opioid disorder, uh, use dis- disorder. And he can more effectively get them involved in services. And the timely access of that is paramount. Because when they are out waiting for a criminal case to be filed, they are re-offending and putting themselves at greater risk of near-death experiences or endangering, uh, other people's lives. And so, um, in short, we will be using, utilizing this device to conduct field analysis of substances that could possibly, uh, injure first responders, police, fire, paramedics. And we would be using this device also to analyze those, those substances to understand what they are. And then we can mitigate those risks by performing the necessary, uh, procedures that would render them less of a risk to us. And so the city of Belton was allocated fifty-six thousand nine hundred and ten dollars through the opioid settlement funds. The purchase of this device is thirty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-four and twenty cents. Um, we're looking for a service warranty of five years for eighty-four hundred dollars. It's a total purchase of forty thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty cents. And this is a, would be a sole source purchase because it is on a purchasing contract through the state of Missouri already. And so that's basically my presentation in regards to.
All right, did I hear you correctly in the beginning that you were looking for sources of funding for it?
We, we had looked for sources for funding this. Um, this is one of the ones that we identified.
Uh, am I understanding, well, I guess you mean outside of our budget? I guess that's my question.
This was a, this was a idea that was brought to us within the last month and a half. And so it is not in the current budget to budget for.
Yeah, I guess maybe I'm not being clear with the question though, but it sounded like you, there might have been a grant or some other way that we might be able to.
Um, I looked at, uh, potentially drug forfeiture monies, but we've expended that account. And so we don't have any, uh, drug forfeiture, uh, funds readily available at this time.
So you're saying we would need to adjust the budget to include this?
That's correct. We would, we would need to do a, a budget amendment, but these opioid funds have been sitting there. I, I think this is the third year, um, that we haven't been able to expense it. Um, because we haven't had anything to, we haven't had an allowable use to spend it on. But I, I agree with Scott, I believe that we do now.
And then, sorry, I just went. And then, uh, how often, and I know this might be a guess, or maybe you'll have actual data, I don't know. But how often would you say we have requested the use of this device from neighboring areas that, and we haven't been in, you know, they haven't received it?
Uh, Detective Jeff Richardson, this is the guy that authored this plan and has actually filed several cases here recently.
So the Cass County Sheriff's Department has one. They will not let it out of their facility because of the expense, it's thirty-some thousand dollars. So they don't, they'll let us borrow it, we have to take it to them. They have to have somebody available to run the machine because you have to be certified to run it also. And then give us the printout so we can put it with our case to file the case. So it's not that we can just go get it, we have to make sure somebody's available to let us use it or to use it, use it for us.
And is there, so my question becomes way more, well, your answer is way more nuanced than I anticipated. But, um, the, so I, I'm assuming there's been multiple times in which we want to go use it, but we just can't because of outside of, you know, regular hours or whatever.
So if we arrest somebody who has a large commodity, a large amount of a unknown substance that we believe is fentanyl, it may be at two o'clock in the morning. And we have to put them on a twenty-four hour hold, so we have twenty-four hours to get that done. So we're working the case in every angle. And there's times that we just cannot get somebody to let us use the machine in that short period of time. So if we had our own, we could do those and we could present those cases to the Cass County Prosecutor's Office in a timely manner and still get them held on, you know, charged on twenty-four hour hold.
Perfect, and then just, you know, any guesses that, is that like a once a month or once a week or once a, you know, how often would you say we run into those situations?
If you're just talking about fentanyl, I get all the lab sheets back from the Kansas City Crime Lab. And we, I get lab sheets back regularly that have fentanyl in them. But I mean, we're still getting meth, we're getting a little bit of heroin, but our fentanyl now is also, some of it we're finding has xylazine in it. If you know, the, talk about the zombie drug. So we're getting those, I mean, officers are taking drugs off people daily. You know, on car stops, maybe not daily, but at least every other day, you know, we're sending a lot of stuff to the lab.
Okay, thanks.
And it's an evidentiary issue for the prosecutor's office, correct? They can't file the charge without knowing exactly what it is that, that is in the possession of the person, correct?
Correct, and if you've seen like cops, they use the old field test where they would put it in a little thing. Well, then you gotta pull some of that out of the bag, you gotta tap it in there. And so then they're not really all that accurate either. They've had those where those failed. This machine is supposedly very accurate and doesn't fail.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Just a simple question. Um, the use of this, would that stop having to send it off to labs?
No, they still want the lab report, but now it can take us three months to get a lab report back. So if we have that amount of drugs, they're not gonna charge them for three months. So like the chief said, those people are still out there using. So if we could get them charged and they get a bond, if they can meet that bond, then the judges can put, um, restrictions on, like they have to have a drug patch. They have to come in and drop urine. So there's like more immediate consequences than if, you know, we have to wait six months to get them charged.
Thank you.
All right, and then I'm up next for the mental health co-responder. I'd like to introduce, uh, Mr. Oscar Villarreal. And he's with, uh, Compass Health Systems. Uh, if you remember, uh, we are the first full year through our, uh, grant through the Department of Mental Health. It was a pass-through, uh, the federal government, uh, for a mental health co-responder. And this is, uh, augments our, um, crisis intervention team program, which we just announced that we are one hundred percent in patrol. And we are, um, trying to get one hundred percent of our dispatchers. And we're trying to get our jails and we're even trying to get our animal control officers CIT qualified. This is a multifaceted program that he is a part of and this is really exciting data. And I'll let you, uh, listen to him.
You know, I think this is my first time up here, am I able to kind of move this pad around? Because it might not be user friend, or viewer friendly for you all to read these statistics. But can you see okay temporarily, I will explain the graph. Are you able to zoom in a bit, just kind of into the, well, ooh, shit, too much.
A little bit. Right there.
Yep, and slide it over, I guess to my, to the right or left, there we are, that's a little bit better for everyone, all right. Well, thank you, Chief, for the introduction. Again, my name is Oscar Viedel, I'm the behavioral health co-responder for the City of Belton Police Department Association with the Compass Health Network. So, good evening, uh, city council, government officials and citizens also as well. I'm sure that you have a buy, invested interest into this. Anybody unfamiliar with the behavioral co-responder program, just out of, I know it's been discussed where they applied for the grant back in twenty-twenty-three. And this is it coming to fruition. where they applied for the grant back in 2023, and this is it coming to fruition. So, I don't want to kind of beat a dead horse. Ultimately, partner with DOJ, partner with DMH, and our local behavioral health agency to create me, my position anyway, where I'm embedded with our law enforcement officers as an additional resource for our officers to support individuals' experience of crisis, primarily to stabilize the individual during the crisis and then connect them to follow-up care after in order to reduce recurring crisis. This also enables our officers to remain focused on their primary role, which is ensuring public safety while handling a crisis case to someone who's more capable of, one, that care, and two, connecting them to the proper resource that they may need. So, this is our results from our first year of the program, beginning in January of 2024 and ending in January of 2025. On the chart to your left, the number 162, that's the number of unique individuals that we made contact with on a first-time basis. So, there was 202 calls that we took that were crisis-related calls. Of those, 162 of them were first-time callers. So, essentially, 80% of the call volume that we receive are first-time callers, first-time users for crisis situations calls. These aren't repeat callers that are calling in the event of a crisis situation. Of those 202 calls, 76 of those calls were handled by a traditional co-response. So, you can scroll up a little bit now. Yep, that'll work, too. It kind of breaks it down a little bit, right there. You're good. Yep, so 60, 76% of those calls were a traditional co-response call, which I call traditional, meaning that I'm with the officer, and we both engage the individual together. 64 of those were handled by the officer by themselves. It could be probably because I was handling one crisis and an officer met another individual who's experienced a similar crisis. Could be because I was off duty. I'm finite. So, sometimes our officers will have to handle these crisis calls themselves. So, 64 of those calls, they handled primarily by themselves. 62 of the calls were taken by me that were outside of the scope of, I didn't put in a request for service or anything. I usually do follow-up calls with people that are in crisis to ensure continuity of care. One with their, if they have an existing care team. If they don't, I try to connect them to a care team, and that could be with resources within Cass County. Sometimes I look to adjacent counties if there's resources available for these folks. So, I took about 138 out of those 202 calls were, in a way, handled by me. So, these other data points are just more of kind of like for your situational awareness. I'm a big statistician, because I like to know the people that I'm working with and how best I may serve them. So, I'm very data-heavy, and I record a lot of data concerning the calls that we take, the presenting concerns, kind of has a breakdown of the, of the calls that I see, and then potential risk factors are also things that I've, like, identified as potential risk factors in the people that we serve. You can scroll down a bit more. Yep. And so, what I particularly want to talk about is, because we're all, we all are kind of aware of, well, at least we should be aware, you're aware now, of the crisis calls that we take within our community. But what we want to kind of highlight is the success of the program and the outcomes. So, since incorporating me, and if we slide a little bit over to the right, that's where, like, the breakdown kind of hits a little bit more. You can go all the way to the right. There we are. Awesome, you're doing great. So, of the 76 calls that we took that were with the traditional co-response, and it's broken down there in outcomes, so either the crisis is stabilized with the resources that we already have within the community or within Cass County, or I find an adjacent agency to help support us. The crisis is then stabilized in place, meaning that the individual doesn't need continue-on care. If the client care is transferred, that means that we are not able to support them in that moment, and they may need acute care, such as hospitalization, and I can help facilitate that process. There are times when the situation at first could be something as simple as a welfare check, that unfortunately, our interaction doesn't go well, and it may result on, on physical actions, rare, but it does occur. And in that event, the client may be arrested. It's very rare in that instance. And the client still has a right to refuse services for even their mental health call. They're still an individual, they still have that autonomy, they don't have to take anything, I say, for granted, or so, but it's rare. So, of that 76 breakdowns, 64 of them are stabilized in place. Nine of them, we've had to send to a hospital, two arrested, and one refused service. Where that gets a little bit rougher is if we look at the number, so it added without co-response. That includes me when I operate by myself and when the officer operates by themselves. Well, our, our good, our crisis stabilizations kind of halved, is what it is. So, 73 of those incidents are stabilized, but 50 end up going to hospital when it's either one of us by ourselves. So, the crisis stabilized is typically better when we're working together, me and the officer in tandem as part of a crisis team. So, with the co-response, 84% of the calls are stabilized, without one, 58%. So, that's kind of a, it's not a significant drop, but it is a drop between having the co-responder versus not having a co-responder when you're assessing someone for a mental health or substance-related crisis. The diversion rates are just what I kind of keep track internally of when we say appropriate care, right? So, for the most part, at least in terms of hospitalization, might not always be what somebody in a mental health crisis or substance use crisis might need. They just might need somebody to talk to, they might need more information, resources. Ultimately, if my position didn't exist, where would they go? And for the most part, when we have people in these positions, other agencies tend to just, we kind of use the hospital. It's ready, it's there, it's an emergency department. We'll collect them, they'll go there. Well, since we've incorporated this program, our diversion rates, when it's a co-response, we reduce the number of calls sent to the hospital by about 67%, and then with a jail diversion of 9%. So, what, we could pick up someone on a potential crime. We see that there's more of a need for treatment, and we recognize that that person needs to be diverted from the law enforcement, enforcement path to a mental health treatment path. And so, we navigate that process to get them on the road to collect, to getting services and getting the help that they need for those instances. When we're not together, our diversion rate goes down to 33% in total. And yep, you can scroll all the way down. Yep. And then, to the left. So, this is the one that I want to highlight, because this would probably make the most sense if my position wasn't here. Again, we want, one of the reasons for success is connecting people to the appropriate resource that they would need or to the appropriate level of care. Oftentimes, I find that the people that we do encounter currently have existing care teams or have seen a mental health provider, have seen a substance use counselor. But for some reason, they just don't continue with that treatment, and it could be for a variety of reasons. But having me there, having that access to that information, I'm able to reconnect them to their care team, and in which case, we get a reduced call in the time, they may proceed with care, they may find treatment more frequently. So, a big part of it is, you know, connecting them to their current care teams, utilizing the, it's now the Behavioral Health Crisis Center, formerly known as CAP, kind of making an appropriate referral there and having them utilize the resources that they have that I'm not otherwise privy to in the field, like seeing a psychiatrist, those things they can handle there. I oftentimes partner with our community outreach programs here, so part of Cass County Coalition, part of church organizations, Heart in Hand has been a big help for me, too, in reaching these clients and then providing for any care that they may need, and then other substance use facilities in adjacent areas. So, with that, you know, I, for this year, our goal was to connect individuals with appropriate resources and reduce recidivism. 80% of our clients are unique to us, and we don't get those repeat call volumes as often as we did prior to my arrival here. A big component that the chief can hit on a little bit more is to return the officer to service quicker, so that they can resume their duties for public safety, because in the past, for a crisis situation, you have two officers involved on a scene. Well, now it's just the one with the co-responder, so another officer is available to take other service calls. And then, of course, to reduce the strain on our emergency departments, as you can see, 67% diversion rate from the emergency department that may not have the resources necessary to deal with the individual in the time. Those are kind of the big things that we did for this program. There's always room for improvement, new goals to, to spearhead that I'd like to lead. But with that, are there any questions regarding this presentation?
Go ahead.
Before I ask questions, I just want to say, this is fantastic. I think we all appreciate the data, and this is kind of even better than maybe we thought or hoped for when we started going down this road. E R E is a very small part. Can you tell me what the acronym is?
Sure. So, it's an Emergency Room Enhancement. So, some of these acronyms will already be existing care teams. So, C B H L is a Community Behavioral Health Liaison. Those are individuals that work primarily with police agencies or jails or even our courts to kind of help people with a mental health referral and divert them away from a criminal justice process. E R E is for individuals who tend to visit the hospital frequently for things that don't quite meet an emergency room criteria. They're not dying, it's not imminent, it's generally speaking, a mental health or substance use crisis, but they frequent that ER more than like two or three times within that referrals put in as a hospital diversion to an inert, emergency room enhancement individual, which is an E R E. The B H C C also has them, so anybody who's admitted to the B H C C will be discharged with an E R E who just acts as that additional case manager in place to check on that person up to 30 days post-discharge from the B H C C until they can be connected with a longer-term care team.
Two other quick things. One, when you co-respond or respond on your own, like, are you safe? How, I mean, how do you assure?
I, I think we've kind of lobbied for me that I'm, I feel like pretty safe and present. I have a very interesting background that we shouldn't get in here, I'll go throwing forever. But, but typically speaking, we kind of came to a consensus that I will report a call for service, though I keep a radio, they know I'm out to a particular address, and in the event that I do need support, I just radioed over it, but I'm pretty, pretty good at keeping myself safe in those moments. If that answers your question.
If you feel safe and Chief Lyons feels that you're safe, then I'll trust that. I just...
It's been a happy, like, medium that we've had to, like, discuss, because there are mobile crisis responders who aren't embedded with police forces, but they exist, and they're tasked with going to these residences and supporting people in crisis, but they don't get a police escort, they don't get any of that. And I had done that about a year prior to this, so for the most part, in my head, I know that 90% of the people that I interact with don't want to do anything wrong, they just need help. And there's that occasional 10% where they might get frisky, but I take measures to protect myself, and they know where I'm at, and I know how to get help when needed quickly.
Okay, great. My, my sister is a licensed clinical social worker, and she works in a hospital, but she has done similar work to what you're doing in the past, and I just have so much respect for folks who do this line of work and appreciate your efforts. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Go ahead.
You did a much better job presenting today than you did at the Home Committee a couple months ago.
Did I? I've had time to practice. This is my third one.
Got anything? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just, I just want to echo, data is awesome, and it's great that you're keeping track of this and providing it to us, and it's really good to see. And, you know, I, yeah, I just want to echo what Councilmember Lawson said. I, the only question I would have for you is, so we, you know, I think the number is around 80% of, you know, first time or whatever the term you used?
Yeah, so about 168 of the calls out of the two, 162 of the calls out of the 202 were first-time callers.
Would we, and this is a, this is a speculation question, but given that it was in your first year, if, you know, we go through another year, would you anticipate that number to maybe go down, just given the fact that we, you know, have had?
There will be some reduction in the numbers, but you have to understand, he's only one person, and there's hours that he's not covering, where we don't have anybody available. Compass does have somebody that can be a backup, but it's not Oscar. And so, to be quite frank, and so, part of our program is, it's a two-year program. Our hope is, when we go for, to re-up this grant, is go for two and place them on 12-hour shifts, so they're serving both wheels. We have better coverage, we're making impacts, we're reducing calls for service, and we're helping our community get to resources a lot faster. The other thing is, is that this program, like I said, was C I T in place, but we also have a 988 call that people can make, and we were very vocal with that, and we even partnered locally with Belton Cares to get that information out, to reduce the number of calls for service to our dispatch. So, this is kind of a comprehensive program, and then eventually, we want to tackle a mental health court, whether that's municipal and at the county level, which is much needed.
You know, in my, in my layman opinion, it appears as though we are very much making a difference in the community. So, the only other, I guess now I've got another question based on what you said, which is, do we anticipate that this data will help support continuance of the grant?
Yeah, I believe so. I mean, many departments have not just one, but two. Lee Summit has, I think, three? How many? Lee Summit has...
How many co-responders? They have two?
They have two. Grandview has two, similar size. I mean, I, I've talked to the chief in Raymore. I know he's interested in getting something similar, but I have also know of some other agencies in Cass County that have actually seen some of, and seen this talk, two. So, I'm very hopeful, it will be very easy to do that.
Awesome. Well, thank you again.
Chief Lyons, I've, sorry, you kind of touched on this, but a follow-up question. You mentioned Lee Summit has a similar program, Grandview, Raymore's interested. Is it somewhat unique that Belton is offering this?
Yeah, we're the first ones in Cass County. The previous system was Community Mental Health Liaison. Yeah, C B H L. They were covering three different counties, the one that was designated for Belton. A lot of times, when we had somebody that needed follow-up or we needed somebody to go with officers, they would say, I'm not going to be in Lee Summit, I'm not going to be in Belton till Thursday, and I'll check in. Well, that's not good, because we have a crisis right now, we need to act, we need to get them the resources. And so, even, I think Compass is seeing these results and is maybe possibly rethinking that plan, because they are the catchment, the mental health community catchment area for this area. But like Jackson County, it's rediscover. They're dealing with smaller geographical areas, and they're a lot bigger as far as resources, but I think this is starting to change the game, and we're the first one in this area.
Kind of related, I'll ask you, the victim advocate that we also have with Belton P D is, that was new under you, correct?
No, that was existing. We added the domestic violence, sexual assault detective.
That's right. And then, the soft interview room was kind of a, a Belton first for the state of Missouri, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, I hope the community takes note of these kind of improvements and changes and investments, and it's fantastic to see, so thank you for your leadership.
I can't, I can't take all the credit. City Manager Joe Warren was a big proponent of this, and so, we worked this out.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else?
Just want to say thank you for this program. Last year, a member of my family needed this program, and it all worked out very well, and it's much appreciated.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, guys. Anybody else? All right. Item L, entertain a motion, enter an executive session, discuss matters pertaining to legal actions according to state statutes 610.021.1 pertaining to leasing, purchase, sell real estate according to Missouri state statute 610.021.2 pertaining to negotiated contracts according to Missouri state statute 610.021.2, and at the record, be closed in the meeting adjourned from there.
Present.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Councilmember Davidson?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
White?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
McCallum?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Mayor Larkin?
Yes.
Richardson?
Aye.
Motion passes.